I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you very much for your patience. At 2:45. Thank you, Joan. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag and the symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
Okay. Second, we have approval of agenda. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Sorry. Roll call, Joan?
Priscilla Manuelito.
Present.
Kevin Mitchell.
Present.
Lynn Hideman. Sandra Jeff. Joe Menini.
Here.
Board members, we have next item, which is number two, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Kevin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Miss, okay, Miss Manuelito.
Yes, Lynn, we're just in the process of approving the agenda. We did the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. And Kevin Mitchell motioned. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Hideman. Under New Business, we do have, A, approval of legal services, RFP, discussion and action. Board members, let me go ahead and just say that this part in New Business is, will be the discussion. And as you can see in six, there is another one down there also. So just, we can take action also, not action, but discussion of the both at this time. Or not mainly of the approval in New Business for now. Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam President, board members. Sorry, Madam President, did you pass this to the board members?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So as we look at what has been provided to you are the options in regards to this RFP. First off, we could cancel the RFP and resolicit the services. We could ask the evaluation committee to reconsider the evaluation. We can award to all those who did submit proposals. We could award as the evaluation committee has recommended. We could have a solicitation for legal services strictly for the board only. And we can look at a sole source or an emergency procurement. Basically, these options were provided after a meeting that we had with State Purchasing Director Larry Maxwell in Santa Fe. We discussed the RFP and the board's stance of the desire of not wanting to award as the evaluation has recommended and pursuing other options in ways to contract with the incumbent, one of the incumbent firms. So these options are brought to you, and in the blue lettering, I'm not sure if that, the colors that you, if that was provided in color to you or not. But what is provided to you in blue are the opinions of the procurement office and the risks associated with each of those. The procurement office would recommend either to have the evaluation committee reconsider or to move forward with the recommendation as an award as the evaluation.
Can you move up closer to the mic, please, so I can hear you?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. So we do, the procurement office does make the recommendation that we move forward with the approval of the award as the evaluation committee has recommended. As for the matters that are pending or threatened against the board and those intimate matters in which the board may feel have better knowledge through the, and legal strategy already deployed, we would look at the sole source method for those particular matters. It's also been recommended in discussions with Madam President and Superintendent Hyatt that we pursue maybe the potential of representation for just the board only through a separate solicitation. At this time, this would be probably the most fair and equitable solution to ensure that we continue with a procurement system that is of the highest integrity possible.
Board members, I just would like to say thank you to Giovanna Marco, Mr. Hyatt. And it was perfect timing when we went down to Santa Fe for Native American Day that we met with Mr. Maxwell. And he was very informative in helping us resolve some of the issues that we had with legal services and very welcoming man. He answered all of our questions that we had, provided recommendations and even offered his extended services of any additional questions that we may have in the future. And I just would like to say thank you for that and that, again, even for the options that were given here to us, I think is something that Marco did say he would write up for the board and for the board to review. And that way you guys know the options that were given to us at that time. So I would really, I would also recommend to the board that one of the, if you would look down on the second page, halfway down, it says sole source, excuse me, sole source emergency procurement. And I think that is, that, I think that would be really helpful for us to continue to move forward with this item. I don't know if you guys have any questions at this time.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hideman.
I just want to reflect first a bit that when the recommendation first came to the board several meetings ago for the legal services, RFP, I think the board did not accept the recommendation at that time because, for one thing, it caught, I think it caught us by surprise in terms of we didn't realize that the RFP was coming up. We didn't know, we had no forethought about that and no foreknowledge of what the description was that was in the RFP for the services. So I think we were sort of, I guess the expression is caught flat-footed. We didn't really have foreknowledge of what was in the RFP, what to look for. And so we just didn't feel secure with processing it and with the recommendation. Since that time, things become even more complicated, partly because Mr. Maxwell is so helpful.
Yes.
He's given, he's lined up all of the possible options, it seems, and then there are multiple ones. So I do find it difficult to look and say, well, this is clearly the one. But I think that the board's first reaction, the majority of the board, I read, the reaction to be that we should redo the RFP. But since that can take quite a while, then that raises the question of doing, we're now an emergency sole source route for getting services that are needed in a quicker fashion, but then still maybe doing the longer term, redoing the RFP for the longer term contract. Is that, is that, is that what you're suggesting, Madam President, in terms of a possibility that we do the emergency one under the regulations 126 and then still look at redoing an RFP?
I think at this time, Mr. Hideman, I think we do need to take action on the emergency sole source. But I would also like to ask for our acting superintendent's recommendation also.
Madam President, School Board, Marco, I think what you are recommending with respect to the situation is, one, approve as is, and number two, to seek a sole source.
That is correct, sir.
So the emergency piece is separate than a sole source?
Yes.
Okay. So on the page, I think it has them tied together. But really, those are two separate things. An emergency, if you were to move forward with emergency, then you have to put it out, back out for a bid and get, receive three quotes. But in a sole source, then you can make it meet the, you can go different route with respect to intimate knowledge of a particular vendor.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, for that clarification.
Madam President?
I have one question. So could we do the, we could do the sole source now?
Yes, ma'am. With, that's the board's prerogative. I believe we can work with Mr. Hyatt to work on the scope of work that would be included in that sole source and get that posted immediately.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question of actually any of you, Marco and Mr. Hyatt, and so the President and so on, since you were all involved with the consultation with Mr. Maxwell. And that has to do with the idea of, because I don't claim to understand this fully, but when there's been an attorney handling a case and that case continues, then the attorney normally is allowed to continue for continuity in proceedings with a given case. But there are also other items of business, I'll call it, where that may continue, but it isn't necessarily a formal court case, at least at present. So the idea of having continuity in legal services, just as we do now with the Zuni case, for example, in a formal way. But I'm wondering if an RFP at some point is redone and redeveloped. As I understand it, pretty much one can put whatever one needs to into the description of the services. So I'm wondering, as you're understanding, that continuity aspect can be a consideration. Where, in other words, if there's somebody who has prior knowledge that might be valuable that can be, get begin part of the RFP description of, how do you see that one?
Mr. Hideman, Madam President, if you, my position as a Chief Procurement Officer for the district is to ensure fair and maximum competition for the district. And that is for all vendors out there. To draft a scope of work so narrow, so as to eliminate other potential vendors, would be violation of the law, first of all.
Yes.
In that particular situation, what we have done in our existing contracts that have expired is we did allow for formal cases that are still in litigation for those attorneys to continue on till those cases close, such as the Zuni lawsuit or any other pending litigation. I believe there's one with, with a formal principle. So when you take those under consideration, we have a means in which to reach that. For those other specific details where maybe potential legal strategy was already deployed by the board and other intimate details, particular knowledge, may be relevant to the, whether it be the defense in certain instances, that is an area where we can definitely look at a sole source. So whether it comes up today, tomorrow, or later on down the road, we do have an avenue in which to pursue that with a particular firm.
Okay, and just one follow-up. So, but even if one put in consideration for something like a certain kind of knowledge prior knowledge, I mean, you still have a point system. I mean, it could be weighted light or heavy or, I mean, in terms of what would seem appropriate.
Yes.
It's not, not everything is going to hinge on one, one kind of descriptor, right?
Right. The evaluation factors are taken into consideration and weighted differently based upon the need of that particular procurement. You know, they can factor from, you know, we're just in the middle of doing some E-Rate RFPs right now, which are under the federal guidelines, which, where price needs to be the main determining factor, which has to be weighted more than the rest of them. However, you know, depending on the next RFP as we, you know, whatever that's going to be for legal services, if that's going to be strictly for the board or for the district as a whole, we can definitely look at that. We did provide, and I'm sorry, not trying to place blame anywhere. However, the former superintendent was, provided this information. And it was our understanding that he had communicated all that with you all, informing you that the contract was due to expire and here's a scope of work that we have out. And that's basically the same scope of work in which we did the last two RFPs and scored accordingly. So I understand things change, times change, and we're open to that discussion with you.
Mr. Abada?
Yes, sir.
Would you explain to me what the emergency procurement would provide as stated on the, under sole source, the last sentence in blue?
Basically, sir, in the event that things are currently under, I'll say where legal strategy has already been deployed. And in the event that, and I'll say this threatened lawsuit by individuals or individual comes to fruition, then at that point, we can invoke the emergency procurement so that we could protect the functionality of our government, which is our local school board and school district. That would provide us an avenue, but currently, at this point in time, without us being, and I'm going to say without somebody here serving us with a lawsuit right now or serving you all with a lawsuit, that's probably not the most recommended at this point. I would, I would really urge you and recommend to look at the sole source method for those particular matters.
But not the emergency procurement action?
Yes, sir. Because the emergency procurement must also be done with as much competition as practicable. So with that said, and that only would stand for the time or the duration of said, of the emergency. So if you're looking something for a longer strategy, the sole source method would be the best utilized in this particular matter.
Is it possible to have two of these items at the same time? A question with the award of the evaluation committee that is recommended on top of page two and also the sole source?
Yes, sir. This, these recommendations that were brought forth are not exclusive. They can be used in conjunction with others. So it is truly options available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abada.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, board members. Yes, Mr.?
Madam President? Two other thoughts. One is, at the beginning of this, where it says that Mr. Maxwell and Ms. Silva indicated that canceling the RFP and reissuing solicitation would take approximately 90 days. I'm surprised at that length of time because the people who submitted proposals, or what are they called, previously, I don't know what takes so long for, how long did it take before to do the announcements and receive the things that take that long?
This particular procurement took approximately 45 days. Their best guess, and I'm going to state from their side as being, dealing with state procurement, their process is a little bit more intense and longer because of the, and I'm going to say red tape that they have to go through. Also dealing with the amount of volume that they also have to deal with. Right now, the way I'm looking at things, we have three E-Rate RFPs and possibly a fourth getting ready to hit the street in addition to a food service RFP. So our schedule is also getting crowded. So 90 days is probably a good guesstimate. However, that's probably on the maximum, ma'am, not the minimum.
And then one other comment, board members. We have not ever really asked to look at, am I correct? We have never really looked at the previous RFP description directly just to see and know ourselves what was in there. So we're still kind of, we haven't really asked it.
And that was something that I asked at, or that was asked by myself to, by Mr. Maxwell. And we can do, excuse me, we can do that too. That is in our rights of a board member to review the description, yes.
So that could, in terms of mechanics, that could be done by next meeting even, right?
Yes.
That could be supplied as part of next meeting.
Going the sole source route, if, would that take us all the way through the 90 days if however we decide to use the sole source legal services?
I would view the sole source, sir, depending on how the scope of work is drafted, to take us to the conclusion of whatever cases are pending or under that scope of work. Now, in the event one of the firms that the board desires to have on contract is selected in the, in the RFP process, then that sole source can die. Now, we can terminate that at any point and move forward with the procurement under the RFP. But it should definitely take us through the 90 days at the minimum.
Do you have a motion, Mr.?
I think at this time, I would like to motion that we go with the sole source route and, and also, I guess, get started with a new RFP. And I think that we would like to have descriptions and being, you know, notified and kept updated and not like last time, just find out on the agenda and have zero communication.
I'd like to make an addendum to that motion, Madam President. And that's to award the evaluation committee has recommended the most action to be taken as is presented on the top of the page, on page two. As an addendum, we can do both of them? The reason why is that if we have a new RFP renewed, it does not execute, our contract is canceled. We can still continue as status quo, correct?
Yes, sir.
I would really like to see the description as what Mr. Hideman had suggested before we even take action on the RFP. I think we don't know what's on the description part of the RFP to deny it yet. So I would really, I think we should do, yes, the sole source as recommended by Mr. Abada and Mr. Hyatt. But I think we need to review those descriptions to see if we should continue on to, with the RFP.
Madam President, when we canceled or before in that meeting, however, you did not approve it, was there something presented by you in that form?
No.
On the legal aspects, on that orange form or pink form or what it was, when you presented it before, was there anything on that? Do you recall?
The only one I do recall, Mr. Menini, would be when we originally presented this for the award back in November, the first time you all saw this. So I'm not exactly sure. I have, I was not at any of the other meetings subsequent to that.
That's the meeting where you proposed, and there was a scoring listed on how they scored? That's what I'm talking about. Maybe that would help us out too. Because it's not in front of me and I like to cross-reference.
You can do that.
Yeah. Mr. Mitchell, can, would you like to, could I ask you to restate your motion to?
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the sole source and discuss and review the RFP for later action.
Roll call, please.
You have to ask on the addendum first, if I'm not mistaken?
On the, okay, so Joan, we're going to go ahead and do the, the vote on Mr. Menini's addendum to add the award is, let's see, number two. The new RFP may be issued if renewed, is not executed or contracted, is, contract is canceled, correct, Mr. Menini?
That's correct. And it's open for renewal, I think it's one-year term?
Okay, roll call on Mr. Menini's motion to do an addendum.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we vote, I want, I'd like to be corrected if I misunderstand this, but it seems to me this is putting the cart before the horse. If we're approving the committee recommendation and we're saying, but we don't know what it was based on, we saw the point system, but we haven't seen the. it was based on, we saw the point system, but we haven't seen the RFP descriptors, and we want to see those, it seems, we would want to see those to still make our assessment on that.
Right.
And then that, this item in the addendum amendment is still available to us. Otherwise, if we're going ahead with that, I guess you're saying we have a year, right?
I understand your, Joe added that addendum, so if you don't want that addendum, you don't have to vote for it, and then we can go on with Mr. Mitchell's recommendation, Nick's motion to approve the sole source, but not the RFP at this time. So Joe is just stating that we need to vote on his motion first, just if we want to add that addendum or not. So if you are in support of that, you can vote yes, or if you're not, you don't have to vote for it.
That's correct.
Okay. So roll call on Mr. Manini's motion to add this addendum.
Mr. Hideman?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Manuelito?
No.
Thank you, board members. Moving on to Mr. Mitchell's recommendation to accept the sole source, but to not approve the RFP, I mean, sorry, to review the description of the RFP before action is taken. Roll call, please.
Mr. Manini?
I would still like to have mine in there somewhere, but I was going to vote for Mr. Mitchell's form, motion, so yes.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Moving forward. Number four, executive session, MMSA, section 10-15-1, H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, and communication with legal counsel regarding pending and threatening litigation regarding lawsuit from Gallup independent Henderson Appeal, and the discussion of communication with PED on the complaints against the board and pending under section 10-15-1, H7 of the New Mexico Meetings Act, Open Meetings Act. A, employment contract of superintendent and considering of hiring a new superintendent. B, report on closed executive session. C, possible action on superintendent's contract. D, possible action of hiring a new superintendent. E, action of approval response of PED secretary and assurance in, of response. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll motion to enter into executive session at this time.
Oh, roll call.
Mr. Manini?
Yes, but you have reported on closed executive sessions twice in there, one in four and one in five.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes, I, with the same note, I think that.
Ms. Manuelito.
Item B was, was.
Okay.
Three eighteen.
Thank you. I would like to, I would like to entertain a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manini. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Six twenty-three.
The board returned to open session at 6:23 PM. The board took no action in executive session and no other items were discussed. At this time, board members, I would like to entertain a motion to authorize the board president to negotiate a possible buyout of the employment contract of Mr. Frank Giappetti. Sorry.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Manini?
No.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Board members, I would like to entertain a motion to have the board president negotiate and execute a tier two-year employment contract with Mr. Mike Hyatt to be the superintendent of the school year for 2017-18 and the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hideman. Roll call, please.
Mr. Manini?
I have a confidence in Mr. Hyatt, but my feelings that I strongly feel, I'm voting no, because I'm still supporting Mr. Giappetti.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to remove the directives from the letter of reprimand for Mr. Frank Giappetti, plus to give Board President Manuelito the authority to sign the letter on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for your motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Manini?
Yes.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Thank you, board members.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Manini?
Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank whoever brought us these Valentine hearts to the board. Thank you very much.
I do. You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. You didn't tell us that.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, same to you.
All of you. Would you also like to add?
Yes, I would. At 6:27, I'd like to make a motion to be adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Manini. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you all for coming out.